Meeting to open session. The Board has been in executive session since six o'clock to discuss four tenure candidates, a student matter, and a litigation matter. We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, with equal liberty and justice for all.
You can have introductions.
Dave Hurst.
Catherine Natter.
Meredith Moriarty.
Jonathan Fishbein.
Jody Monroe.
Holly Donnbaugh.
Willow Bear.
Wendy Sampson.
And Judy Keough.
And Christine Beck will not be with us tonight. First up on our agenda is our approval of minutes. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the November 17th, 2021 regular board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Next up are our meeting reports. And first up is our superintendent's report.
Thank you. Just a couple of pieces of information. At our transportation update a couple of meetings ago, we talked about the delivery of electric buses. And I think the day after the board meeting, we were contacted and said that our delivery date is being pushed back from January to probably the beginning of April. Like all things with manufacturing and supply chain these days. So we're hoping to have them around the beginning of April. So a little bit of a delay. Also, in regards to any COVID updates, we did receive information right before the Thanksgiving break from New York State Department of Health in Albany County, just prior to that, about the option for a seven-day test out from quarantine. We do have a district committee meeting next week, so we're going to talk about this a little bit more. But what we did this week is we did, any parents who contacted us who their child was in that situation, we did say if they could get a test and submit it to us that we would, and they met the criteria, that we would allow them to come back from quarantine on day eight versus staying out for 10 days. The challenge with us providing the testing is we've not been able to get the tests from New York State. There's a limited supply from Abbott. And we did receive a notice from New York State, I think a couple of, it must have been Monday, indicating that they're aware of the shortage and the less know if it changes. But at this point, we're using the testing for students in the high-risk activities that need testing and the random testing. But we don't currently have the ability to test for that seven-day option. And to be honest, if people don't want their children quarantined, if they get vaccinated, they won't be quarantined. So that's really the longer-term solution that we want to promote. We will be talking about a few other things. So at our next meeting on the 17th, we should be able to provide some additional updates regarding any COVID protocols. I also would just wanted to do a quick follow-up from our couple of meetings ago on the school resource officers in regards to the DARE program. We are continuing to look at that as part of our wellness changes, our wellness curriculum. That is one of our action plans for the year. We agree that that does need to be looked at and decided where does that fit within our K-12 program, and we'll have updates throughout the year on that. In addition, we'll be working with the Bethlehem Police Department in regards to making sure the roles of the SROs are clearly identified in any goals or data that we'd like to collect moving forward. And that is my report for this evening.
Any questions for Jody? Next up is the, our board report. I do not have a lot tonight, but I did want to give a plug for the high school play that is coming up next week. For anybody who's interested in attending, the production of Puffs. I am told that if, whether or not you're a Harry Potter fan, that it will be fun to see. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to share?
Yes. Last night, BOU did its annual Talking to Your Teen. It was well-done and it was recorded, and if anybody wants access to it, BOU will make that available.
I just wanted to say congratulations on the recycling day totals. I was pretty impressed when we got those numbers finally. I was anxious to see because I had taken a few bags of stuff over to see how it all turned out. So very good on that.
Anybody else? All right. Moving on to our student reports. Do we have anybody here tonight from the high school, from the Student Senate?
Hi, I'm the President of Senate. We're mostly just working on the holiday food drive, which ends December 23rd. It's district-wide, we're collecting food from all schools. And then on the 23rd, we're going to organize it in reusable grocery bags and hand it to families in need. It's almost all the food you need for a Christmas, Thanksgiving-type of meal. And then we have a voucher for local grocery stores, so they can go out and buy their own turkey or tofurkey, anything else like that. Any questions?
Awesome. Thank you for your time. And do we have anyone here from the middle school? Guys can come on up to the microphone.
I'm Phoebe Donnbaugh, and I'm on sixth grade in Hudson.
I'm Maxine Lee. I'm in sixth grade in Mohawk. Today, well, first of all, we're going to be talking about student council updates. So we're doing the Holiday Caring and Sharing Program. It's underway in homerooms right now and it ends in December 15th. Student Council also celebrated our veterans during the week of November 11th by creating a display on our bullet, front bulletin board. We have pictures and memoriams for 25 veterans who are relatives of BCMS staff and students.
Winter modified sports have gotten underway and games and matches will begin next week.
The middle school bands, choruses, and orchestras in grades six, seventh, and eighth are planning their first performances since the start of the pandemic. They are scheduled for these in January, on the 11th, 13th, and 18th, and more information will be coming soon.
BCMS will be ordering our free character T-shirts within the next two weeks. Shirts are printed with one of our 24 strengths, 24 strengths on the back, and our middle school and high school be the change logo on the front.
Last but not least, Serena Williams is leading our Hero of the Month vote, and all voting will end this Friday. Our other nominees are Emma Gonzalez, Vanessa Hugens, and Maggie Smith.
Thanks, guys. I'm curious what character traits you guys have on your shirts.
I have kindness. And I have humor.
Thank you very much. Next up is our presentation. And tonight, we are having an academic update by Dr. Dave Hurst.
Thank you. So similar to last year, this presentation is somewhat abbreviated from prior years in it. We do not have the depth of assessment data, but we do have quite a bit to report nonetheless. So obviously, our, this presentation supports all of our goals, but most specifically the academic goal. I did want to start off by just talking a little bit about enrollment, because I do think that the enrollment trends and our class sizes have helped contribute to our ability to mitigate what many refer to as learning loss during the last two years. We are not seeing here the trends that folks are seeing across the country or throughout New York State, and I'll get more into that when I look at the data. But a large portion of that is due to last year and this year. We've made efforts to reduce class sizes so that teachers can provide a much more personalized, differentiated instruction for students, which in turn helps fill any deficits that students might have, but at the same time also enrich where necessary. So you can see at the elementary level, our classes K-5 progressively get smaller when we go fifth grade down back to kindergarten. Kindergarten, in fact, is under 300 students. So we've been able to essentially maintain class sizes of 18 to 19 students on average. We do have some, our largest classrooms in the district, we have two fourth grades that are 22 students, but those are the two largest classrooms. All but five classrooms are under 20 students at the K-5 level. Similar picture at the secondary level. A little trickier here, the middle school, we can do it by sections because of the teaming structure. High school, basically what I did was I took a look at our five core areas, sort of average class sizes, just, and I kind of had a, you know, so like Algebra I, I kind of stuck in ninth grade, Geometry 10th. So it's not 100% because not all courses are single-grade level, but I think it paints a pretty clear picture that at the secondary level, we're able to keep our class sizes down similar to fashion that we are at the elementary level. And you can see there that, you know, most of our class sizes are in that 19 to 22 range. So in terms of assessments, you know, typically I do present data on three through eight testing that New York State does and also Regents testing, and we just don't have reliable data from last year to report. If you remember, the tests themselves were not canceled like the prior year. However, the three through eight testing, there were a couple sort of issues with making the data reliable. Number one, our kids knew that the test meant absolutely nothing, and that the state was actually pushing to have them canceled, but the federal government would not let them. So many students went in with the mindset that, I'll just do what I need to do, right? The second is typically it was a two-day test, first day multiple choice, second day more constructed response. So this was whittled down to one day, only multiple choice. Third, the tests were all previously released items as opposed to items students had never seen before. So we actually had students coming to teachers the first day in a panic saying, I think I cheated. And he was like, well, what do you mean? Like, well, I've seen all these questions before because we practiced them the other day in class. So clearly, the data can't be reliable, and the students recognize questions in advance. So hence, the data is out there, but I do not put any validity in it whatsoever, which is why the state also did not really release, they kind of put it out there and said, it's here for you to view, but we're not going to make comment on it. In terms of the Regents examinations, again, those were offered, but only students that were in person could take them, and students were not required to take them. They were afforded the exemption as they had been in prior years. So total amongst the exams that were offered, we only had about 50 students take all of the exams. So to try to report out what those numbers mean would not really make a whole lot of sense, since it was a very, very small subset of our students taking those exams. The advanced placement exams, however, did go on as usual, and you can see our numbers here for the last five years. Now, what might appear to be, you know, sort of a decrease in the number of students taking it each year, keep in mind, that goes in line with our enrollment trend. We do, we're maintaining about a 30% of our student body taking exam any given year. So in 2017, we had just over 1,600 students, whereas in 2021, we had just over 1,400. So proportionally, we're still 30, 31% of our students are taking exams. To put that in perspective, you know, one of the things we talk about is sort of equity. We have one of the higher percentages in the area of students actually taking exam. So to give you just a couple comparisons, Niskuna, which is about our size, has half the number of students taking exams that we do. Shenandoah, on the other hand, is twice as big as us, if not more, and they have the same number of students taking exams. So we are making the exams much more available to our students, and part of that has to do with our sort of open enrollment policy. We do not have strict prerequisite requirements for our exams, and we encourage students to take them. So that is why we have such a high percentage of our students taking exams in comparison to our neighboring schools. And this is just another slide, this, actually, the AP calls this their Equity Report. Close to 50% of our seniors graduate having taken at least one AP exam and scored a three or higher, which is what makes it eligible for college credit. So if you recall, this is a number that we've highlighted in our strategic plan, and we'd like to see this number continue to increase. You know, with our typical rate of, in the 90% of students going on to two- and four-year colleges, we should really have a number that mirrors that in terms of students having exposure to college-level coursework at the high school level, so they understand what it is that they're getting into. Similar to students that are going on to trade programs, getting experience in trades before they go on to study those. So our results, again, you can see the number of exams for this given year are, the numbers are going across, again, three, fours, and fives are the one that receive credit from colleges. And on the next slide, you'll kind of see this over the different courses. You can see that, you know, the two areas that we struggled with a little bit last year were math, computer science, and history and social sciences. We're still digging into that a little bit. Two things, though, the history exams were recently changed, so that's something that we're continuing to work through. And then on the math and the computer science ones, our math scores were lower than historical. And one thing I think I can point to is that we made a decision early on that they changed the way you could do the testing window. Typically, all AP exams are given in the first week, first two weeks of May. Last year, they afforded districts the flexibility to basically extend it throughout the entire month of May. So each exam was, many of the exams were given two different windows where they could be offered. So rather than cram everything into two weeks, we decided to spread things out so a student that was taking, say, four AP exams wouldn't have all four within a two-week period, they'd have all four over a four-week period. Well, in speaking, we thought that would kind of de-stress students, and it kind of turns out that the opposite happened, right? Talking to students after taking the exams very late in May, they said, you know, we really wish that was at the beginning of May, because although it seems like a lot to take all these exams within a two-week period, we get in this sort of exam mindset. And it's just, they felt like by the, by that end of May, they were sort of done at that point. And so we do think that kind of contributed to the results in math not being where they historically had been. That being said, our results were still much higher than when you compare regionally and obviously state and nationally. Just to give you an idea of the number of exams that we do offer, in the arts, we have four different offerings. English, we offer both exams. History and social sciences, six exams there that we offer. Math and computer science. And just to think, just a few years ago, we were only offering three, Computer Science A and Computer Science Principles are two of our newer exams. And last year was the first year we offered the Computer Science Principles course. We actually had a student receive a perfect score on the exam, and there's only a handful of students in the entire country that score a perfect score. So that's quite remarkable, and that is the first year that we've even offered that course. So there are the sciences, world languages. And obviously, we don't offer Chinese, but we, every year, we have one or two students challenge that exam after studying on their own. So some graduation data. Our graduation rate overall hovers around 95%, as it typically does. You can see here that the different categories for which we award Regents exams, and again, you know, over two-thirds of our students do receive the Regents with advanced designation. So that's very important. That means that they are taking Regents exams and coursework above and beyond what is expected for just a traditional Regents diploma. Obviously, we still have students enrolled and, that are dropping out, and those are students that we are, you know, constantly monitoring in our coordinated care teams. You know, again, we know who all 12 of those students are. Those, it's not that it's a surprising number, in that we know who those students are, and we continue to work every year to ensure that those numbers don't exist, but unfortunately, they do. So last summer, we did offer three programs to help both students and staff. We had our Extended School Year Program for special education students, and that's obviously, Kathy Johnson has presented that prior. We again held an academic recovery program for middle and high school students, which afforded students the ability to either finish up credit or recover credit that they had lost throughout the year. That was a very successful program. The, the middle school, we had about 20 students coming actually here every day, and they were rotating through four different sort of teachers to recover that credit. The high school was more, we had about 100 students go through that, so that was more online, meaning one-on-one with teachers or in small groups. And then we did have our science students coming on-site because of the lab component. But that was very successful in enabling students to recover credit that they had lost throughout the year. And then finally, professional development, curriculum writing. You know, I'm going to speak in a minute about why I think our marking period averages and our I-ready scores have exceeded probably expectations, and I think a lot of that has to do with our curriculum writing process. The last two years, we've made a very concerted effort to prioritize our curriculum, taking a really, really hard look at the standards and making sure that it's the critical standards that we were really diving deep into and not trying to do too much. Like, what are the critical standards that are part of the way the standards documents are written, right? You've got your critical standards, you've got your supporting standards, and then you've got your extra standards. And we really, really focused on the critical standards, because those are the ones that prepare you for the next grade level or for the next course. And by sort of being hyper-focused on what it is that we are covering, I do think enabled us to push students along and actually accelerate learning when others were sort of regressing. So this fall, we do have some data points that we can use to kind of help us gauge whether or not these curricular decisions made sense, where our students compared to where they were historically. And one way to do that is through I-ready data. Just to give you an idea of how the I-ready scaling works, there's sort of five levels. It can be a little bit misleading in the fall, because if you're a second grader, day one in the fall, that means at the end of the year, you're supposed to have mastered all second grade standards. So at the beginning of the year, you're probably not there yet. So if you're one grade below, that means you're a first grader. Well, yeah, because second grade just started. So really, in the fall, yellow is fine. That means you're really where you should be, right? You're leaving first grade, you're still at the first grade level because you haven't learned any second grade curriculum yet. So in the fall, the green and the yellow are all where students should be. As the year progresses, obviously, that's when students should all be moving towards the green. So you can see that over the last four years for which we have data, and you, just to make a note at the end, you can see that the number of students in 2021 is much smaller, and that's because I-ready only use the data for students who are able to take the assessments on campus, right? So some students took them at home last year, that was discounted. We're only looking at students that took it in school, because that's the only way you can really compare year to year. But you can see that, you know, we don't deviate that far from historical trends. Last year, the yellow did grow quite a bit, but this year, we're starting to kind of get back to where we were prior in math. And the same can be said in ELA, looking very, very similar. So next, I thought we'd take a look at some marking period data, because I know last year, if you recall, after the first quarter, there were a lot of concerns that students weren't doing as well as historically they had been. So just kind of going through the different disciplines, in ELA, you can see, yeah, last year, the dark red is higher than all of the other years, but this year, take a look. And again, I think this speaks back to our prioritized curriculum in that teachers are really working hard to ensure that students are getting a very, very focused curriculum. You can see that the dark green, you know, students in the 90s is larger than it's been the last four years, right? And the red has shrunk back down again. We see similar trends in math, right? Dark green growing, where you can see last year, the red was a little bit thicker, and that's where we had, we talked about this last year. Same with science, and same with social studies. So you can see that the percentage of 90s has grown in all four core areas, five core areas when we include language, right? So I think some of the concerns that we had last year after Q1 have sort of gone away, right? I think, you know, as the year progressed last year, there were a lot of lessons that we learned, and we've carried those forward this year, and students are basically exceeding where they were historically at the middle school. High school paints a very similar picture. You can see for ELA, very, very similar year to year, although again, the number of 90s this year is greater than it's been the last four. Math, if you call, this was a huge area of conversation last year. Again, pretty much back to historical levels, and actually, the number of 90s has increased. Similar with science, right? There was a little bump last year in the red, which was cause for concern, back to historical levels, but again, the number of 90s has increased. Social studies has pretty much remained consistent, but you can see a larger red last year, back to historical levels this year. And world languages, fairly unchanged over all five years. So I do think that some of the challenges that presented themselves last year at the beginning of the year worked themselves out throughout the year, and certainly with more work over the summer in terms of professional development and curriculum writing, continue to improve what's happening in the classrooms. So the other thing I didn't really mention when I went over the enrollment report was that we're very fortunate, right? We have, all students are essentially back this year with us in person. We only have one student participating in the virtual academy through BOSI's. So every other student, K-12, is back on campus with us every day. So I think that's also something that contributes to the success our students are seeing. The last thing I wanted to talk about was just to give you sort of an idea of where we are with standards. Pretty much every curricular area is going through major standards rewrites and implementation. Many of these timelines have been sort of adjusted because of the last two years. But just so you're aware, we do have new standards rolling out in ELA, new standards in math, new standards, brand-new standards in computer science and digital literacy, right? These, digital fluency, these had not existed prior, right? These are brand-new. So I will talk just a little bit about this slide because it relates to some of the work we've done the last seven years. If you recall, back in 2014, 15, I worked with Siena College to write an NSF grant, which we awarded, and that's when we were able to offer our very first computer science class through Siena College, Introduction to Computer Science. We had 23 students. Fast forward to this year, we now have seven sections of computer science over four different courses, 119 students, right? So that's 417% growth. So this is clearly an area that our students are interested in. It's clearly an area that is desirable. If you look at the number of unfilled computer science jobs out there, it's remarkable. But not only that, people say, well, you know, I don't want to be a coder, I don't want to do computer science for a living. Similar to other math, science disciplines, right? The purpose isn't just to teach coding, it's to teach critical thinking and problem solving, right? So the skills that you walk away from in these courses are easily transferable to other areas. The idea of having to write an algorithm is essentially the same as having to write an argument, right? You really have to be thoughtful and piece through these things. So I'm actually in the process right now of working with Siena to write another NSF grant, not to offer more courses, because that's sort of inevitable, but you need the capacity to teach those courses, right? So you need teachers. And I don't know if you're aware, but there, right now, there's not one computer science certified teacher in New York State, because the certification just came into existence the last couple of years. So we're very fortunate, we have a math teacher, two math teachers now teaching computer science, and we have a technology teacher. But we need to increase that pool, and the only way to do that is to incentivize people to get trained and take those courses, but without having to pay for it themselves. So right now, the grant I'm working on with Siena is for them to allow our teachers to go to Siena College for free of charge, to get the number of credits necessary to obtain this new certification. So just to kind of give you a heads up that that's a grant that I'm working on right now, and hopefully, I'll have more to report on that once, and if that comes to fruition. So this is a program that's growing rapidly, for sure. Science, new standards. I know we've presented the new science standards in the past where Jen Gagne's come in and had brought in different of the kits for you to work through some of the labs. So this is something that we've been working on for the past few years, and we're very, very fortunate to have Jen, and she's a leader across the state and does trainings. So we're very, very fortunate to have her leading this. So we're very, very fortunate to have her leading this, not only here, but across the state. Social studies, similar. This again, kind of a little hiccup because of the last two years, but new social studies standards are kicking in, which caused new Regents exams to be kicked in. Also, just the way, there's, not just the content, but also sort of the way questions are being asked. World languages also going through standard rewrite. So you can see that, you know, the, when I talk about professional development, this is in curriculum writing, this is a large part of it. You have to be able to react and respond to when new standards are written. And in order to do that, you have to be trained in the standards so that you can then appropriately write curriculum to support them. Arts, new standards, and then PE. So I just wanted to give you sort of an idea of the amount of changes that are coming. Some are sort of subtle, some are a little larger, but there's a lot of new standards being rolled out and a lot of curriculum writing that needs to be done to support those.
The computer science standards, is that, are those just applicable to the classes at the high school?
Nope. So these are K-12.
Computer literacy.
Yeah, these are K-12. So it talks about digital fluency. So we wrote, prior to these standards being written, maybe five years ago now, we wrote a scope and sequence for grades K through five in terms of digital literacy and digital citizenship skills. Most of the digital citizenship lessons are being handled through our library media specialists. And then the, the computer application pieces are being handled within the classroom. And again, a lot of it at the K-5 level are basic keyboarding skills, word processing skills. So the fact that teachers are using things like Seesaw and Google Classroom and WeVideo and different applications like that, that they're hitting all of those standards through that. Many teachers are actually doing the Hour of Code, which is coming up pretty soon, where they're doing things like Scratch, which is a drag-and-drop programming language for kids. On the middle school, we're very fortunate. Grade six through eight has a really nice sequence right now. Sixth grade has sort of a standalone computer applications course, ATM. And then because of the technology program, they do get a lot of coding experience in seventh and eighth grade. And that's another area we're looking at is, one of the courses Siena offers at our high school is essentially accessible at the eighth grade level. So we're looking at ways, how can we sort of push some of that into the middle school that would then at least give students exposure so they can make an informed decision in high school as to whether or not the AP courses or the other Siena course is something that they'd be interested in.
Okay, thanks. And the other question I had was related to enrollment. I was wondering whether, do we have any data on like the, our four-year-olds in the district? So the preschool, like what, what those numbers are?
Yeah, we, so I know we work with the Capital Region Planning Commission and that report should be coming out probably within the next month or so.
Usually we get it in December and they track birth data.
Mm-hmm.
And then we do, Melissa Hauser, registrar, does get information. Some people register their children earlier, but that's kind of dependent upon who reports that and who registers. But the Capital Region Planning Commission, Commission data has been fairly accurate in our K. We haven't seen, that was the one area, we were a little concerned how accurate that would be, but it's been pretty good the last few years. So they do a pretty good job of predicting that.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have questions? Catherine?
Yeah, I just real, just real quick. I just want to appreciate and applaud you for going for the grant with Siena. That sounds like a really awesome opportunity and I wish you all the best. They're not the easiest things to apply for. So that's just, that's really exciting whenever we can provide that extra like support for our teachers and to do it, you know, free of cost is just.
Yeah, fingers crossed because the first grant that we were awarded, we were one of seven grants in the entire country. And this time, they're also offering seven grants. So the odds of being one in seven again, might not be in our favor, but we'll see.
You guys are great. Thanks.
Just one more question about enrollment. You noted that we have 12 students last year who, who we have indicated have dropped out.
Right.
How does that compared with like the last five years, about how many people?
That number always hovers between two and 5%.
Okay.
Unfortunately, yeah.
But it's pretty consistent.
It's consistent for sure.
Any other questions? I think you're done.
Thank you.
Thanks for putting that together. Next on our agenda is our recognition of public comment on an agenda item. If we have anybody with us this evening who would like to address the board on an agenda item, now would be the time to come to the microphone. Next is item six, action items. A, finance action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following finance action items, one and two.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. B, professional personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action item one.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. C, support personnel action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following support staff action items, one through eight.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. D, other action items. It is recommended by the superintendent at the Board of Education approve the following action item one.
Shall move.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That passes. Item seven, recognition of public comment on a non-agenda item. If we have anyone with us tonight who'd like to speak on a non-agenda item, please come to the microphone and provide your name.
Hello, my name is Kate Gaffney. I have a, I'm a parent in the district. I have a high schooler and a middle schooler. At your last meeting during the transportation mileage limitation discussion, bell times and later high school start time were discussed. This is something I've been following both in district, statewide, and nationally for the last several years. During the discussion, I heard the all-too-familiar cons, sports, clubs, adult convenience. What was missing from the discussion was why the district decided to do this a few years ago, because it is in the best interest of the physical and mental health of our high school kids. At the federal, state, and local levels, the priority focus this year has been on the mental health needs of kids as they return to in-person instruction during the pandemic. While I was upset at the last-minute decision to revert back to the earlier start time at the beginning of this school year, I understood, given the circumstances, of the bus driver shortage. Our kids are facing a mental health crisis. It has been exacerbated by the pandemic. Mental health needs, anxiety, depression, suicide, increase in risky behaviors. These are topics that have come up in our district historically and continue today. We received an email about a high school, high schooler threatening violence and facing a felony just today. At your November 3rd meeting, the high school counselor, high school counselor described a student in crisis that we wanted immediate intervention due to suicidal thoughts. BOU just put on a program last night to help parents help their kids that suffer with stress and anxiety. Sleep deprivation exacerbates mental health issues and other health issues. So I urge the district to stay the course and find a way to do all it can to help our kids get the sleep they need. Other points I want to make. Look at the history. Our high school students have asked for this for years in the student surveys. Science supports it. Our district has done a phenomenal job this year protecting the physical and safe, physical health and safety of our kids due to the pandemic. Some of those decisions have not been popular and you have faced resistance. But you did the right thing and you put the health and safety of our kids first. I'm asking you the same here. Don't abandon the physical and mental health needs of our high school kids now. Remember that any decision that inconveniences a parent or another adult alleviates a stressor the current schedule brings on other parents. The current schedule does not please everyone and any change you make will not please everyone. Make the decision that is in the best interest of the physical and mental health of our kids. They will all be high schoolers one day. Where there's a will, there is a way. Thank you for your time and your service. I'm well-aware that it's not easy to be a school board member in this day and age. I'm well-aware it's not easy to be an administrator in this day and age. I value your service and I thank you for your dedication and your support of public education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kate. Anybody else? Next, item eight, future meetings and events. On Monday, at December 6th, at 6 o'clock, we have a policy committee meeting here at the high school in D-122. And then on Wednesday, December 15th, that is our last regular board meeting of the year. And we're anticipating executive session at 6:00 and the open meeting at 7:00. Seeing no need to go back into executive session, could I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Shall move.
For a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned. If we have any PEG students with us tonight who need a signature, come on up and you can see any board member for a signature.